I have a meeting to order. Carrie, you would like to lead our invocation?
Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and ask that your presence be here and for your wisdom and guidance that we do your will on this earth to do what is best for our community. Jeremiah 29:11 states, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "planned to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future." I ask in the name of Jesus to bring us together and do your will. Amen.
Do it stand for the white flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you draw the fourth floor?
Renee.
Carrie.
Here.
Ellison, and then you have Allison, Kelly. Yes. Yes, Jeffrey.
Yes. Next, we have approval of the agenda. A motion.
Make the motion.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Next, we have the approval of the past meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I do have one. It's small, but in a public comment. It says Renee and I attended the layer fighter training government should try to do. Carrie also was with me. So I know it's small, but...
Okay, so you want if Carrie's in the minute?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and small corrections are two of the small things as well. One near the beginning, it says the Pledge of Allegiance was set and roll call taken. And if we could put the invocation in there in the first month that that was done. And then there was one item, the diversion council memorandum of understanding. It says there was no information from the sheriff or prosecutor, and there was very limited information, but there was no information.
Is there a minute?
Yep. Any bearing of all from the board on the minutes?
Those changes.
Hearing none with those adjustments, do we have a motion?
Make the motion to approve the adjustments.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer's report. And the board have any questions, thoughts, any concerns on the treasurer's report? Hearing none, we replace those on file. Next, we have paying of the bills.
Make a motion about brok paying the bills?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee, yes ma'am, Carrie.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the planning department report, if you would chief.
Thank you, sir. Still need to request for service last month, still below the 10-minute benchmark with the NFTPA. Everything else has been going well. We did replace the heaters and the apparatus base after they, because we failed. There was a slight increase, obviously, with the building back up temperature, gas bill to go up a little bit, we saw that in the bills, but I suspect it will be now lower. It's obviously all on the system now where it's all senses when it needs to adjust. It deserves that. Other than that, it's been well. We've been on track with the production of the heavy rescue, it's still working well. I meet with them again tomorrow, Zoom meeting with them and go through it. It has made it through the first phase of all the wet jack, which is all cut out now. They're starting to piece it together. We're still projected to do some time in May, could be a little later sometime, say he comes. Other than that, it's been going well. We're still under budget with the Musquegon. We're less than that now, we're 13. Stuff's starting to come in, just looking forward to that. Should be June or July before we get into services. It's pretty old. It's all embedded. We're still in for the AFG grant, still waiting to hear for that. I'm also looking at the SAFER grant next year, which is the staffing one, but that's usually a three-year grant. That's something to be discussed to figure out the thing we want to do. Federal government will help us through a partial note, then obviously after that we have to pay it back. So I have a little theory on that. We'll discuss that further. And then the last, as we have submitted, the request for our budget, I'm sure maybe I have to deal with it. And we're looking forward to that being approved on Saturday. I will be, potentially a slight delay coming from Plainfield that morning if you were there at the fireside, but I'll be up here in a minute. Other than that, that's all I have. Any questions, Mary?
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have the planning commission report. And while you have been here, I will read his written report. On February 22nd, two public hearings, the first covering amendments for ordinance 2022-01, in lot coverage, lakefront setbacks, transportation terminals, and site plan reviews. No public comment, but discussion from the board with some minor adjustments. Motioned and approved for board approval, second public hearings for ordinance 2022-02, mobile food vendors, which was also motion for approval to the board. Then our last agenda items, a discussion on keeping of animals in gardening. Did good discussion between all commission members, weighing pluses and minuses of easing the restrictive ordinances that are in place. Discussions to continue. All right, next, we have our first public comment in the section, and I assume a number of people here want to comment on things. So we have one hearing in this meeting, that is Resolution 2022-11 for the Michalinda Resolution Number Four. So if you're commenting specifically on that resolution, you can comment at that time. Otherwise, you can comment on anything else on the agenda for up to three minutes. Little timers just keep us on track. It stays green for one minute, yellow for one minute, red for one minute, and beeps more at the end of that. So if you have anything that you want to state about any of the agenda items, if you would come up to the lectern, state your name for the minutes, and just give us your comments. And if you want to have something more like a discussion with the board, that's completely fine, we'll just save that for the second public comment, or if there's something not on the agenda.
So what are we currently commenting on?
Anything on the agenda.
Including the Michalinda road project?
In the Michalinda road project, we have a hearing specifically for that, so on that item we'll have a public comment section.
Thank you.
All right. So you have no public comments? We will move on to our decision items. The first one is a land bid opening for 28.97 acres on Russell Road. Now, I have four sealed land bids that came in so far, because we had two up for request and because we've been transitioning people in the office, we're not clearly marked on what they're exactly for. So I'll open them all on here. If they apply to this, then they will be for this. If they're for the next one, I will move them on to that. All right. First landed. And I sliced the paper in half as I was slicing that little... All right, it is for this parcel, and it is for a bid of $91,000 even. All right, the next one for this same parcel on Russell is $101,999. And the fourth is for $92,500. Those are our four bids. Obviously, a wide range of differences. Everyone was over the minimum that the board had set of $82,000. And so just because I know there's a number of options here, there is $91,000, $101,999, $211,500, $92,500. Those are our four bids.
I move to approve for $211,500 bid on the parcel.
Motion. Do we have a second? It's word by Lori, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Sorry, Carrie.
Carrie, you have a guess.
Lori, yes. Renee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. And you can make all of those votes. All right, second landed opening, also on Russell Road. This was for four parcels, and we had a miscommunication here as there was also change in the office at the same time. There were two sets of four parcels directly next to each other that were being talked about being requested. And so the set of parcels that were intended to be requested are the ones that we had the realtor due the appraisal on. But on our documents at meeting last month, the four parcels that we actually listed in the paperwork were the other four directly next to them. All right, and there is, there's a difference in acreage here of about half. So we don't have anything up on this. I didn't receive any other than those four bids. So we don't have anything on this anyways, and therefore we don't need to do anything with it, which works out about. Apparently, no one's interested in anything that no one requested, which makes a lot of sense. Next, we have the correct four that were requested, the correct numbers. The realtor appraisal is the same, because these are the four that were already appraised for between $25,200 and $28,000. And so as the board can see on the low, on the map here, we have two sets of four directly next to each other, and it's the smaller set that was supposed to be requested.
I make a motion to open parcels 61-07501, 061. Well, the four parcels, under consideration for bidding as a whole for a minimum of $28,000.
All right, there's a motion for the four parcels going up for bid for a minimum of Do we have a support?
I support.
Support by Kelly. Any discussion?
Is that $28,000 for all four?
$28,000 for all four.
Yep.
Requested as a set. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 2022-01 for lot coverage, lake setbacks, terminals, and site plan reviews. These are primarily verifying, simplifying, reducing vagueness in the ordinances, various things that the planning commission has been working on.
They've gone through the...
Processed through the planning commission, done their public hearing in that part of it, so now it's up to the board to decide if you want to pass these into the ordinance officially.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-01 concerning lot coverage, lake residential setbacks, transportation terminal, and site plan reviews.
I'll second that.
Motion by Lori, second by Carrie. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, let's roll call votes.
Lori, yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 2022-02 for mobile food vendors. And this has been being talked about for quite a while to let mobile food vendors know that they are very welcome here and have a specific set of rules that they can refer to and go by. So the planning commission went through the process on this as well, and this is the final result for the board to consider.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-02 concerning mobile food vendors.
Motion by Lori, second by Carrie. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the road brining information. And oddly enough on this, the prices don't seem to have increased. You know, inflation is happening across the board on a lot of things, but for the regular roads, the total price comes to $23,652.70. And then our optional roads, which is part of what we get the special assessment for, for Cat, Brock, and Johnston, as private roads that are done through a special assessment is $1,959.46. And if the township wanted to do any brines on top of the first brining, that the road commission splits it with us on, covers half of it, then it would be the full price to the township of just a little over $47,000.
So you're saying that if we do the suggested brining...
So if we do it, a single brining has been, has been being done in the recent past, all right, then it would be the $23,000 plus the almost $2,000.
Okay.
If we do the regular and the optional, which we should do because we're collecting a special assessment.
But if we do a second brining, you're saying the total cost is $47,305.39, and that includes the brining on the...
No, it'd be that full price again. So it'd be 47,000 plus the additional $2,000 each time we wanted to do it more than once. So 50 grand a pop, basically. 27 miles of dirt roads in Dublin, so we have that piece of the question.
And you're recommending two brands, which is...
I, I would, I would go with the one that's being done. And we can, we can increase it to two or three or however far we want to go, but I'm currently working on getting the budget close to being honest, and at $50,000 a pop, that might still a little more of a challenge. I mean, I collect a lot of calls of complaints under roads being dusty, obviously. And so more brining would be ideal, considering that, to reduce the dust, but it comes, it comes at a cost. He missed five acres.
I just want to make sure you get the right down, okay? So we're looking at...
For the first brining, it's the 23...
$652.
Correct, $23,652.70, that's what they estimated that, plus $1,959.46.
What about the $1,518.59 for the border roads?
I believe this number is included in this.
And Jeffrey?
I'll make the motion to approve the regular and optional road brining agreement with the road commission for the first brining, one brining.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jeff, second by Carrie. Do we have any other board discussion?
So it's the first brining?
It was for one brining, but the road commission covers half of it, correct? All right, roll call vote.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lori, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have moving the April meeting date. A few of the trustees had brought this up because they had a schedule conflict. The April meeting is currently set on April 11th at 6:00 PM, and so I requested brining to the board, so I did. We have...
Three of us, Mel, Carrie, and I are all precinct delegates, and from Stegen County, and it's set to April 11th date is set by the state, and we have to meet at Whitlow's that day to fulfill our obligations, which is an elected position also. So we take all the these positions very seriously, we have elected positions, so we'd like to propose either April 4th or April 25th. Or the Dalton Township.
So I, as a, as a general policy, and you guys know, I've told you that, I prefer not to move meeting dates. I assume you're all going to miss it. At some point over four years, you might miss a meeting, you'll be sick, you might be out for something personal, someone comes up, some sort of scheduling conflict. And there's even, if, if I miss, there's a process for that. Lori opens the meeting, asks the chair, and then the board, board votes for who's going to chair the rest of the meeting. But I also understand your scheduling conflict on this, and I, I'm open to moving it. My major concern ends up being the, the public not expecting a move on that end, but expecting that we're at the board meeting. I think, I, I think it's reasonable, I think you're proposing that it get moved to a couple, either a Monday before or two Mondays after. It ends up sliding our other meetings kind of close together. I think it could also be reasonable just to move it to the next day.
Is there a word for that, too?
I can, I can take a 12th and say, fine.
Okay. Well, into that. The three of us, it's just, and it's not like we're going out to dinner or something, you know, this isn't, the three of us at one time, it's just something we can't. If we could move it, we would.
So I make the motion to cancel township board meeting on April 11th and moving it to April 12th.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion by Carrie, second by Renee, to cancel the meeting on April 11th, move it to April 12th, it would still happen at 6:00 PM here at the township. Do we have any other discussion on that among the board? Yes, I will not do that.
I have a precinct meeting.
Yes, understand. All right, hearing nothing, roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the free transfer station pass. And on this, the reason we did it this way last year, well, there's a tradition of doing a discount pass in Dalton for the transfer station, it was $5 previously. Doesn't work very good logistically to do a free dump day out there because the tractor gets backed up down on that little drive of Michalinda and onto Russell Road. Those logistical issues. The idea with this, a $25 pass that we opened up, so you could use it how you needed to use it, was equal to a fairly normal truckload, and so it replaces that idea of free dump day. Let's spread it out over the year. We had 106 people get those this year, and it worked out well, logistically, out there at least. And so that is, the wording out here is the same as was on the card last year. And that's what this is for.
I make the motion to approve the Dalton Township free dump pass.
I have a motion to hearing.
I'll second that.
Second by Renee. Any discussion on the board? Hearing none, let's roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 2022-11 for the Michalinda Resolution Number Four. This is where we will have the public hearing, and so we will, correct? We will open the public comment for this hearing. And so if anyone would like to comment on Resolution Number Four for Michalinda, if you want to come up to the lectern, state your name and address, and then comment for
My name is Steve Holm, I live at 1090 Michalinda, and we were going for the month of February, we had trouble with our mail, so I'm not, we're not up to speed on exactly what's going on. We made the January meeting, but not the February, so we're here in March, so. Anyway, is the vote tonight for the, for the funding of the road?
For Resolution Number Four.
Okay, all right. So it's either yes to approve or no to disapprove?
It, it actually, it gets quite complex.
Oh, oh, okay.
Because we have objections, and so I have 10 possible options.
Okay. If the road does not get paved, are they still going to brine it?
I am not sure.
Okay. All right. And if the road does get paved and dished this year, are they going to put the lines on it, speed limits on it? Is it going to be dividing lines on it? And what's the speed limit going to be?
I'm not sure.
Well, that's why I'm here, so. Okay. That's it? Can we answer them tonight, or?
I would need to know from the road commission. And the road commission is a little reluctant with information until they know if this passes, so.
So are you going to vote for it tonight, or don't vote for it and then find out later? Is that it?
It'll be, and so I'll go over this, because this is going to be a little confusing, so I'll, I'll go over it on here. And there's, because we have objections, all right, there are, I believe, 10, 10 different options that I came up with of how this could go. And there, these objections, so we have six written objections a week ago, including the fact that we have one, but in the last handful of days, we've had five others come through. And so those objections mean that people could take it to the tax tribunal and then try to get out of paying those taxes. And there's a few ways that that could go at that level as well. It makes it complex for a number of reasons, and so I think this is, these are the basic options of how it could go. And the tax tribunal could resolve within six to 12 months. There's 35 days after Resolution Four, if it passes, for people to object. So it could get voted down, and then the costs that have been incurred, which are two costs at this point, there's one, there's all the legal fees and those things, and then two, because the road commission offered us a discount on material last fall because that had been billed, but the decision had to be made at that time, and it seemed like it was going to go through, and I wanted to save people some money, I told them to put that material out there at that time. And so I incurred costs there, which was a smart business decision, but politics and business aren't different, so probably not the best political decision, because now we have ended up here. It makes it a little more complex. And the road commission figures they have, and I worked pretty hard to get this number out of them, but they figure they have about $25,000 worth of material out there that we got for $3 load instead of $16 load, so it was a pretty deep discount, which is why the price of the road went down about $100,000 from their initial estimate. And then we have about $5,000 in lawyer space. And so the board could choose to vote it down, the general fund would have to cover the cost so far. The board could choose to vote it down, we would assess the costs that have been incurred so far. The board could vote it through, and we could just move forward with it. The board, board could vote it through, we could wait for the appeals to the tracks, tax tribunal. Then the board could move forward, and maybe there would be no reduction in those taxes after those hearings are held. The board could vote it through, we could wait for the appeals, we could move forward with it, there could be a partial reduction in the taxes at the tribunal, the general fund could cover the difference. We could vote it through, we could wait for the appeals, we could move forward with it, there could be a partial reduction, and we could do a supplemental special assessment to redistribute costs on the other people on the road. The board could vote it through, we could wait for the appeals, we could move forward with it, there could be a full reduction for the people that have appealed it, the general fund could cover the difference. We could vote it through, we could wait for the appeals, we could move forward with it, there could be a full reduction, and we could do a supplemental special assessment to distribute those costs. The board could vote it through, we could wait for the appeals, we could then rescind the fourth vote, and the general fund could cover the difference. Or we could vote it through, wait for appeals, rescind, and then assess the cost so far incurred. Those are the 10 options that I've come up with on how this potentially could go.
I think everybody's confused. There you go.
It's, it's a mess.
Also, if you look at also that right now, the price of fuel is going up, the costs right now is locked in. If we don't get this paid, what is the cost going to be 10 years down the road? Also, brining is going to go up, we all know. Brining is a reoccurring thing every year, you can be paying it forever until the road does get paid. So paving is, it's a 10-year lock, you're locked in for those 10 years, but after that, the assessed will drop off, so the extra tax you're paying will drop off eventually, and you don't have to worry about brining anymore. Now, it's just maintenance and upkeep. So I think initial costs, it's sticker shot, let's face it. But the way, the way the economy is going at this time, it's not going to get cheaper than what we got right now.
The ball is rolling, and if we stop it now, and the township incurs approximately $25,000, it might, it might bring that down to...
Well, so the road commission would, does not want to... Well, so the road commission would, does not want to negotiate or discuss that until they see how this comes out. So we have about $5,000 in lawyer fees, although over, over the day, I talked to him a lot today, so we racked up more there. And then there is $25,000 worth of material and work done out there so far. I believe I probably could negotiate with the road commission, essentially request from them that they cover a certain percentage of that, whether that would be 25%, probably not 50%, maybe, maybe 25%. So that, that could occur, plus they, they won't really tell me if, and to what extent more work would need to be done out there to make what we have currently done. And so I know there is, I know that's a lot of options, and it grew extremely complex, which is part of why the road commission either resists these processes, because they don't like them, and they consider them just natural political disasters. And so I, people support paving the road, I definitely wanted to follow through on that, should definitely be more conservative in the, the future on that because everyone knew this is considered fairly normal or something like this. Plus, I took that $100,000 discount in material, which was probably, probably a mistake. Makes sense from a numbers standpoint, but the timing wasn't ideal. So I know, I know that is a lot, but we definitely, we want to hear your comments, is the time for that, whether for the road or against the road. So do you have public comment, please? And you wanna go?
No, quick, I'm gonna ask, it is on your list for brining issue.
Hmm, okay.
Cool, because it is dusty.
What's the status on, uh, to the west, past bike trail approval township?
Well, so what I know about for land just had from my interactions with the supervisor, he had brought it to the board for paving, couldn't get a second for it. And so now they're probably looking at, but I'm not sure it's all part of their process. It's obviously out of, out of our control and out of our municipality of doing something like a bramble upgrade, essentially making the material that's out there a little bit better. Yes.
I have Jeff Adrosi, I live on 821 Michalinda. I just have a couple questions for you. I was alarmed when I received two letters when I realized it was being built, that lot. When I bought my house, I had two 5A lots, so instead of $6,205, I'm gonna pay 12 grand for this road update because I have two lots. I'm on it twice. Well, I'll get there. Because I was alarmed about that, I came down here and I was able to get the list where I had my name on it twice. Because of that, I decided to combine my properties just in case, and I wonder what the current bill is, what's the current price?
For you, it's four for each.
For 63.
Yeah, it's four more than the property's.
So I just went up on our boxcar person.
$6,393.96.
It was 6,205, right? It's $6,000.
Yeah.
Kind of what I'm concerned about is, I didn't know about this until the last minute, that I was gonna double charge. And luckily, I, I figured it out. I had to come here for the cost. I had to come to this place to get the cost. That was not mailed to me with all the other information. I think there's probably other people on the street that feel the same way.
They have a lot of information, nothing.
That, that's the main thing that I'm concerned about. I feel like a lot of people on the street don't know what's coming. And we're probably taking, taking my surprise. I just, I just wanted to make that comment, so.
I'd like to say also that there are other parcels on Michalinda Road that will be being combined as well, so that price will continue to increase. I just wanna let you all know that.
If parcels are combined after the fourth resolution, it doesn't matter as far as the tax is concerned.
So do they get double charged?
If it's, if it's not combined by today, you will be double charged.
If it passes.
If it passes today. At the minimum, maybe more time for people to get their stuff together.
All right, more public comment right here.
So how, how do we know if we're combined or not?
That if you're combined?
But I have two lots, my house sits in the middle of them.
Well, we should be able to look on the list. What's the name?
Miller.
I have Miller on here once.
Okay, so one, yes, it's okay. I just, I thought so, but it took me by surprise then.
I'm surprised to hear that they didn't get more information. When did this process, the ball start rolling? I'm, I'm asking because are there people that possibly are snowbirds that are gone and not here during this time and are gonna just get smacked with this, not knowing that they're uptown? I mean, granted, it should have been mailed forwarded, but no one has seen that.
Right, so, I mean, we've, we've been through the, the process, so you've, you've seen the process since we accepted the petition.
When did that start?
When we first accepted the petition, I cannot remember which month that occurred in.
Last year.
Sure, last year.
We've been going, we've been going for a while. It wasn't a slow process, or it wasn't a fast process, and I separated out Resolutions Two and Three, so people would have time to look at the numbers and do those types of things. And we tabled the one and pushed it forward. And so, and I've publicly posted all of, all of the packets and all of the numbers and the contracts and all of the information that I've had on this online on the website, and then, of course, we have the legal notices that have to go out, and the legal notices that have to go into publications, newspapers. And so we've done that process as it's set up.
Is the price on the website? 'Cause I couldn't find it.
Yeah.
The, these papers are on the website, so the, the, all of the papers that I have to look at on this process have been included in the board packets. The board packets were publicly posted.
Do you know how many more people are being double charged than it's gonna come on?
It was only three on that sheet of paper.
Me, I have two lots. I get charged double. Kim, Ken have two lots. Elliot Garreta have two lots. I thought Holmes has had two lots, but they...
Holmes is listed on G I S system as having two lots.
Holmes has had, you have two lots?
Unless they change it.
Well, and this is the legal situation, so yeah, sometimes it takes a while to update, if you, if you've done a combination. But I have two Johns, two Todds, and two Lassos on here that have the same names in addition to Adrosi. So, and then others that are copies of last names or double-tuped last names have different first names. And so those are, this family member.
I, Dermetha, I'll have the quarter-mile lots.
So do you have a lot of, that's something, everybody else got a single charge instead of a double, what would it cost?
I do not. So, I mean, definitely the more we eliminate, then if you eliminate the various other double lots, it'll go up by, well, in that case, it was 100, but it'd probably go a little more each time than that. Be a few hundred for each person. And then obviously, the appeals for the tax tribunal end up being a huge, a huge question mark. And whether those go through or not is, is very hard to tell. Which I do have, because I have the, the written appeals, so we can read these into public comment at this time in this hearing. So we have one from Nathan Wilks. And as a property owner for partial on West Michalinda Road, I'm writing to state my opposition to the proposed plan of paving the road at the cost of a tax increase. And one from Paul and Kelly Mizirkowitz. We, Paul and Kelly Mizirkowitz, am writing this letter requesting a stop to the Michalinda Road paving project. We are opposing this project based on the cost to the citizens of West Michalinda Road, including ourselves. As much as we would like to see some kind of work done correcting the health and safety issues from the extreme amount of dust, the cost added to our taxes for this project can be a burden to some of the citizens on the road. Please with respect, accept our letter of protest to the Michalinda Road project. This one is from Donald Blamer. I'm opposed to the road improvement for the reason of the very high tax increase. I did not want to pay an additional $620 per year for the next 10 years. I would rather drive on a dirt road. This one is from Rick Blamer. I'm opposed to the road improvement for the reason of the very high tax increase. I did not want to pay an additional $620, $20 per year for the next 10 years. I would rather drive on a dirt road. And this one is from Vern Blamer. I'm opposed to the road improvement for the reason of the very high tax increase. I did not want to pay an additional $620 per year for the next 10 years. I would rather drive on a dirt road. And this one is from Jessica Adrosi. Hi, Jessica Adrosi, I'm writing this letter to protest the special assessment that would be proposed in order to pave West Michalinda Road. I declined to sign the petition that was circulated, and I spoke against this project at one of the first hearings. I believe that paving the road will exasperate current issues of traffic and speeding on West Michalinda. I also oppose this project due to the cost. I did not want my taxes increased. According to the map provided by Dalton Township, this project will not pave the entire road. It stops at the bike trail, forcing residents to drive on the stretch of dirt road in order to access Wet Hall Road. A small, passionate group of people are pushing this project because of the dust, potholes, and mud in the spring and fall. Last summer improvements were done to West Michalinda, which have greatly improved these issues. I believe this project is incomplete, unnecessary, and too expensive. And so those are the written objections that we had. Only one was included in the original meeting packet that I posted online because when I posted the packet, that's all I wanted to hand at the time. So the rest have been received in the last handful there. Do we have any other public comment during the hearing portion? But so, well, if you come up first, you, you can.
I just had a question on the, uh, my name's Brad Schmitt of 869 Michalinda Road. Our road gets brined several times a year, and you're talking about the cost of brining, so is that going to deduct from our cost? Not brining anymore after it's been paved?
Did the brining will be deducted from that anywhere, so that it comes out?
Well, it should be, 'cause you're not paying out from the township, right?
I think it comes out with the general fund.
Yeah, so that would be a plus for us that you're not putting money into brining that anymore, 'cause the county's now responsible for the road.
Could you tell me tonight?
That's Brian's.
This is gonna cost me, I've got lots on Michalinda Road. My name is Holm, H O L M.
All right, Stephen and Sharon Holm. It's one lot for $6,393.96.
That would be my cost?
That's, that's the assessment cost.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And then because we're going out for a bond, then it could be bond cost, and paid over time, obviously, accrued interest.
Does he have two lots on there? No, just one, one, basically?
All right, any other public comment? All right, hearing now, seeing none, we will close our comment section for the hearing.
Is this the one you'd like me to abstain from?
Correct.
So I have something I'd like to read before I make that decision.
There you go.
I oppose the Michalinda Road project moving forward. It's not a private road, yet it is proposed that the cost should be placed solely on the residents of Michalinda. I find it hard to believe that there isn't county or state funding to offset the overemployed cost of this one-mile section. We have several people on our section of Michalinda that have two parcels. One person has already combined their two lots, increasing the price to each resident. If the others combine their parcels, it will only put an unburden on all of us. I talked with an attorney. There are dozens of examples on board members who have voted on processes such as this. I am not sure why, after I have voted on the previous Michalinda project, that now, all of a, all of a sudden, it is an issue with Jeff. But I do believe that my interest in, is minimal. This project is spread out among many citizens. I do have an example. And this is nothing against you or Renee, Carrie or Renee, but Resolution 2021-29 Twin Lake Special Assessment, Resolution Number Four, was offered by member Carrie Knight and supported by member Renee Knight. Motion by Carrie Knight, supported by Renee Knight, to adopt Resolution 2021-29 Twin Lake Special Assessment, Resolution Number Four, passed. Roll call vote, yes, Carrie Knight, Renee Knight, Noah Twining, Whit, Flatter, Hayes, Martin, knows or none. That being said, I am going to abstain from my vote on this project. But I did want you all to know that by him asking me to abstain, and the attorney said I should, doesn't mean I don't have to. But at this point, I'm going to leave it up to the citizens of Michalinda Road and take a step back.
What was the, the one that you read off that you voted on? What was the four?
It's Resolution 2021-29 Twin Lake. I don't care to debate that right now because this is more important.
Okay, okay, I don't know, I don't know, the number's offhand, so I don't know if that one's over. But yeah, so I should have probably caught it in a...
It's the Twin Lake weed.
Oh.
Assessment, special assessment.
I got you, yeah. Yeah, I should have, I should have caught that earlier and asked the specific legal opinion on whether Kelly, because she lives on the road, should be voting on these resolutions. And obviously, I spent a decent amount of time talking to Laura recently in getting the objections, and he said that she shouldn't be voting because she has a financial interest in the road. And, I mean, that's, that's her choice. She got her, her own legal opinion as well, so. Obviously, a political disaster is what we're, what we're in the middle of. Which is fine, not, not her first, and won't be her last. All right, this is just the one that we happen to be in. So we're up to, we're up to the board deciding on stuff. Do you want me to read through the 10 options that I came up with?
Sounds like a rock and a hard place.
I believe we have 10 losing options. I do not believe we have a, we have a great winning option.
I mean, the price is great, $3 versus $16.
That was a, that was a very good discount.
I can definitely see why you would go that way.
Correct.
Everyone seemed to be very supportive of it in the beginning, and now here we are on the last stretch, and the brakes are being put on. And I don't sit on this board for myself. I wanna represent the people. That's why I'm sitting here. Trustee, trust is in the word, and I'm in a conundrum. Because it sounded like it was very supported and very much, and now I'm, I can definitely see why the people are objecting. If I were living on that street, personally, I would still vote for it. That's my personal. But I don't sit here as my own person. I don't live on that street. So I'm torn.
It's a difficult and, and clunky process. That's, that's definitely true. And so I, I don't see, I don't see an easy or, or incredibly obvious way out of it.
What would happen if we delayed the vote?
It would just delay.
Let, let some of these people get through the finances and all of that. Get the final numbers. What would happen if we delayed it at this time?
It would just, I mean, we would, we'd end up with the same decision, but delayed.
Well, what I'm saying is, 'cause we have people even, like you're saying, double listed, and we don't know the numbers that, how it will affect the people.
If you adjust all those, but even there, so with the objections, it's, I mean, it's a very difficult guess. If things go to a tax tribunal, if there's gonna be a reduction, what the extent of the reduction is going to be, and then how we should address that if that occurs, and that'll be a greater amount of money than a land combination. Significantly, potentially. It could, it could end, also end up being nothing.
Do we have the exact cost of where we are with this project?
The road commission has not sent me an invoice.
No, we're not talking about the road commission cost. I'm talking about the cost of the township business, the township has spent.
How much money have we raised?
At this point, to this point. At this point, to this point.
Just on the process?
On the process.
So I requested that from the lawyer, and he said about $5,000. That was the end of last week.
But that doesn't include our cost for publication? It doesn't cost, you know, the cost for, because the pavement that was put on Michalinda Road has to be paid for, which you had done. So we don't, that, I guess the question is, if we stop it now, what is the cost? Do we have that cost?
We don't have the exact cost. Oh, the exact cost is difficult to come up with because if the road commission doesn't want to state exactly how much of the $25,000 they would cover out of the material that's been out there, and if they don't want to stay, state what exactly they would do to wrap it up afterwards, which I want both of those things, they would prefer for this process to conclude before they decide on those things. The other number we could probably, we could probably come up with pretty close, but I'm guessing we're about, probably about $7,000 in figure on...
Oh, more than that, publications. It costs us almost $1,000 a publication.
So that would, yeah. So we're ways over that.
In the Chronicle. So that's what I'm saying. We publish, publish six times. Close to mailing. I'm just saying, if we make, I mean, if we make a decision, if we give all the numbers and the road commission can't give us the cost, tell, don't...
The total projected administrative cost, when we're looking at the numbers that were included in the list, added up to about $16,000 for the whole process itself.
From the road commission and from the attorneys?
From the attorney.
Okay. So if we don't go through the whole process, they don't get all of that money. I think it's, it's before we stop, before we move forward, I think at this point, and I have a, I do have a problem, like Renee does, that the fact that we don't have two board members, and if Kelly's abstaining, that means four people are making a decision. I'm not comfortable with that.
Side of the court.
I'm not comfortable with that at all. It is a quorum. It is a quorum. Yes, technically, but I'm, I'm not comfortable either.
I'm not comfortable with it, and I don't think that we have, I mean, even if, if the road commission won't, if the road commission won't say if they're going to help us or not, then we will need to have the numbers without help so we can make a decision.
So far, that's $25,200.
That's the positive what they put down, not, not the additional cost to, because it does need more work.
Not the additional cost. They would prefer to not, to not give us that until this is determined.
I'd like to know what the road commission does if they don't, if they don't come to the board and say, "This is what it's going to cost."
And so basically, I...
It's not like I'm asking them to go to the supermarket and buy a burger or something. It's what they do.
They're hesitant to say anything because everything that they say, even when they say estimate, becomes carved in stone.
They would just prefer for these not processes to not, not happen. Right? And so their initial construction permitting and engineering cost was $318,324. And then we have the various fees and those things. The total estimate for the cost is $364,656. Now, because we were able to get the material at last, we were able to drop that down to $260,403, so about $100,000 less, $96,000 less. And then the road commission covers 25% of the road because it's a local road, and they agreed to do that. And so the initial amount, because they're all percentage, 25%, the initial amount that was looking at being assessed was $285,75, and the amount we're looking at now is $211,001. And so those, those are the numbers that were there before that, but they would prefer for a process like this to, to, I mean, they warned me off of the process, but I said we had a petition with a lot of signatures signed, people seem interested. I was telling anyone that inquired that it's very expensive, like a million dollars a mile. We came in at, in the end, at less than 25% of that cost. And so it seems, seems like that would be less controversial, but obviously, not at this point.
I make a motion to move, and we'll, we'll postpone this to the next meeting in April.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and support to postpone it to the April meeting. Any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
All right, and the next one was Resolution 2022-12 for the Michalinda Bond, which obviously does not now apply in this situation. And after that, we have property sales revenue to sewer fund debt.
I make the motion to approve applying the revenue generated from the property sales of sewer debt.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Carrie. And any other discussion among the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. And next, we have the deputy clerk on the bank accounts, and there are four separate things for this because that's the document like that.
I make a motion to add Deputy Clerk Lexie Stibbs to the Choice Bank bank accounts.
Motion by Laurie, roll call second by Carrie. Any discussion among the board? Hearing none. Do we have to roll call vote these for the bank?
No, we do not.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
I make a motion to add Deputy Clerk Lexie Stibbs to the Lake Michigan Credit Union accounts.
I'll second that.
Motion by Laurie, second by Carrie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
I'll let you keep going here. I make a motion to add Deputy Clerk Lexie Stibbs to the Muskegon Corp. Credit Union accounts.
Motion by Laurie, second by Carrie. Any other discussion among the board? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
One more group. I make a motion to add Deputy Clerk Lexie Stibbs to the Michigan class accounts.
I'll second that.
Motion by Laurie, second by Carrie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to our discussion items. First of all, we have the Beagle Pavilion rental. So we have a pavilion out at Beagle, and over the years, it looks like it's been done in various different ways, but currently, we don't have something like a good agreement or contract in place, and we don't have a P D. that we would charge for reserving that for a rental. So I wanted to see which way we're, was leaning on doing something. Uh, we did start putting together, Andrea got that in place, looking pretty good, an agreement, and then we could do something like a small rental fee, I know, like we're doing for $25,000, $500.
I have no problem with that, but we need to, we need to upgrade the electrical if we're going to, if you're going to rent that pavilion out because that electrical is hit and miss. More miss than hit.
We've been out there today and then walked around, and it's a nice park, but there is definitely some, some maintenance required on it.
Absolutely.
To actually have a rental, I think that's, that's good. That's something you could use. It also helps that for maintenance fees, to make sure it is, keep it maintained. Now, here's the thing. People are going to use a pavilion without renting it anyways, as it is currently, as it's, as it stands. So how would we pepper that, or is it there? How, how is...
Well, I guess one of the things you could, well, one of the things a lot of people do is like, because if we upgrade the electrical, you can actually have the electrical shut off when it's not rented. So that way, so if somebody's renting it, you turn the electrical on. And we have a maintenance building there, and I don't know, I don't know the electrical out there, but I know there's a way, if we run the electrical the way we should, to run it from the pavilion to the inside of that maintenance building and have it locked. So when you rent it, you go out there, and you turn the electric on, duh.
It could be done like that, or it could be just left open as a, as a first come, first served.
It could be, but the thing is, you know, and the thing is, the nicer you make it, the more it's going to be used, and then, then we're going to be looking at increased utility bills, and you just have to, I mean, if we're going to do it, something needs to be right.
Correct. I agree. That's a good idea. All right, that part could mostly be TLC.
Yeah, but overall, that whole part needs some TLC, I agree.
I'd like to hear some comments about, I know this isn't an all-time typically, but they should be, and one other thing, just...
Well, we got one more item, and then we have public comment, if people want to discuss their opinion on the road. All right, we have the senior village money. Now, Snowplough, I called all the people on the list and talked to most of them. There were a few people that left a message with, and overall, they were happy with the service, even the people that weren't happy with the service, it was something specific about the bombing or miscommunication, and they were happy with the idea of the service. Of course, they would be slammed in that direction because they signed up for it. We used approximately, and we're working on getting that final bill so we can pay approximately half of the money that was slated for that. I also talked to people if they'd be comfortable with money going towards enforcement of senior scams, because there's now officers in the county that focus on that, and obviously, a huge industry that would be good if it was discouraged through, through law enforcement, and it wasn't such an easy job to get into. And so that's, that's the way I would lean with the continuing money, and I want to see where the board was on that. I can prepare it with paperwork as well.
See that towards stopping the scams. There's way too many people targeting that, especially now, it's just, it's horrible.
Thanks for the dance. I get those calls, thanks.
Well, I do too, but I don't...
Okay, I'll take that. Six fifty, that works. So, yeah, so then you're just, we're going to bring, we'll do a motion then for the rest of the money at the next meeting?
Yeah, I can look at, do it for the next meeting or within the next two months, I have to inquire specifically into the allocation of funds for, and how that process works.
So you have received your funds?
Correct. The, actually, did we, did we receive the funds?
We haven't received them yet, no.
We just have the amounts that were allocated.
We have the amount that we've allocated.
Okay, I need something from you by the end of the month on what you're, you want to do with it.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, because I did get the notification from, I lost Renee, but yeah, I did get the notification because we hadn't allocated the rest of the funds.
Kim Seer is our county commissioner.
Yeah, and why, yeah, why it happens like that. So the senior village money got passed through the county. The county distributes it among various programs. They distribute it also partially to the local municipalities. Each local municipality has to pass it through the board how they're distributing it, but also the county commissioner has to sign off on it. So that's, that's why and how he's involved in that. So, yeah, we will get that, we'll get that through, because we already did the part of it for the snowplough, but not the second portion. Perfect. All right, moving on to our second public comment session. So if anyone would like to speak on anything, yes, if you'd like to.
Karen Fowler, 2769 Midway Road. Speaking of this, I didn't intend to talk about this, but last year, when they distributed meals, they distributed meals, those meals were put together in Georgia and Florida, not in Michigan. And I tried to call and find out about it, but nobody, they hung up on me. But I think that's, we have food and people in this state that could put those together. They didn't need to come from Georgia and Florida. I wanted to know if, how many people do you send applications for absentee ballots?
I have, right now, I have 1,730 people that are on my permanent list.
Okay, they have requested it.
They, they are on my permanent list, and they requested to have the applications for an absentee ballot.
Okay, you don't send them to everyone?
Absolutely not.
Because we went through this.
That was the state of Michigan that did that to me. I'm not going to do that again.
Yeah, they did, uh, we went through this, oh, when Mary Ellen Sherwood was the, we went through that, and she was sending them to everyone. That's a very costly thing. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't happening. Talking about spending, spending township money. Thank you.
Come on.
Anything else, Tom? Anything else? Yeah?
I didn't have any intentions of saying anything tonight either, but Jessica Palmer, 5470, aggressive road. The whole Michalinda Road deal, I know that's been getting worked on, I think, since last March, April, May, somewhere, and they're not coming to the meeting every month. And the township has put a ton of effort into this. And so as the county, we, we do a lot of work for the county because we're, we're road builders, and the numbers that are out there for residents that are here, that's a smoking price. It's a hot price, and our numbers are going through the roof. And that's a hot deal, I would take. You said like $6,000, $6,500 for 10 years, roughly?
Yeah, $6,300.
So you're talking $630 a year?
Correct.
So you're talking less than $2 a day?
You got some money.
We all, there you go, still putting it on hold.
We love you with that, too.
Well, I, I'm just hearing a lot of controversy about it. I'm just, I mean, I'm, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, I don't live over on that road. I live on Russell Road. You know, I'm just saying, it sounds like, I mean, the township's struggling a lot with it, the board's struggling with it, there's definitely some residents that are opposed to it. And, you know, you guys that are there, you know, that want it, if I were you, I'd knock on some doors and try to get it done because it's, you're not going to see these prices again. The $100,000 Jeff's talking about, I know exactly what that is. I told the millings that came up, Whitehall Road.
Correct.
And normally, those go right to the contractor. And in that situation, they went to the county, which, we were involved in that job because we did the shoulders on that road and everything, and we knew that the noise was going to the county for that project. But that's a huge savings, and that's a third of that right there.
And the reason they offered it to us is because they knew we had this in the works and not been talking about it.
And so, you know, just hearing bits and pieces, I'm just throwing it out there, who it's worth for any of the residents. I would knock on doors if you have to to try to get it done, because when you look at the cost of a couple bucks a day, you have a paved road, I mean, you're going to spend a couple hours a day on a paved road, or spend $10 a week to wash your car. I mean, it's, it's, it's the same thing. The other thing is, those millings that got put down there, for a lot of people that aren't familiar with that type of product, it's a great product for driveways and slats to put on a road like that. Once you start developing some of those potholes and stuff, that stuff is almost impossible to maintain, and you're going to get permanent potholes that the, the grader truck that drives up and down the road ain't going to touch. And it'll be worse long-term than it is right now. I would just get it done. And the same thing, I'm saying to the board, just whatever you need to push it through, I would just get it done. It puts me one under a year. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of expense.
I appreciate that.
Do what you can to get it done, and then on the next one, make sure you have 100%. I had a petition, it's where you put it up here.
Yeah, and 100% on a petition is, is a good idea. There's also the idea of escrow, that some places require people to put up a certain amount for the new stream cost going forward. And obviously, I mean, it puts me in a weird position of not saving money, but if I was offered something like that because a project was potentially going to happen, and it was a deep discount, not a great idea to accept it. Saves $100,000 in, in this case, but also creates more controversy and maybe costs people some there in some ways as well, so very careful.
My name's Ken Jan. I live at 980 Michalinda. Been there since 1973, so I've seen a lot, eaten a lot of dust in those years. I appreciate, I really appreciate the board, when a petition was sent in, listening to the people and not just discounting it and putting it away someplace or filing it, and then acting on it. I, it's very much appreciated. We have a double lot, two parcels, and so it's going to be quite costly for us, but I'm very much in favor of, of having the road paved because it's been a fight every year. The road commission has done, I'd say the last five years, they've done a much better job than they have in the, in the previous years taking care of the road and grading it. It's graded almost all the time. Dust is still a problem, but the road commission did work. I was out there, I talked to... it, it's graded almost all the time. Dust is still a problem, but the road commission did work, I was out there, I talked to a lot of the guys that were working in, on the road, and they spent a lot of time and energy working on that road. Just a bunch of nice guys too, didn't mind, didn't mind stopping and talking during the course, when the trucks were coming, they didn't just stop. But I appreciate that, and often you hear the people, the loudest, the people that speak the loudest are those people that are opposed to the road, and I understand that, and we can, we can do it, we can afford it, but if my neighbors can't afford it, then I, I wouldn't push for it, you know, if, if, I wouldn't do that to my neighbors, or, you know, I just, I just wanted to say something positive, and leave that in your, leave that in your mind. It would be wonderful to have that road paved, even at the cost, if, but that's my opinion, that's my opinion. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mr. Tim Bortman, I live at seven hundred, Michalinda, and I had to agree with him a hundred percent, I'm totally in favor of the, the, the cost, I can't see, if they were to do this, two years from now, it'd be twice as much.
Very important.
And it seems like a lot of money, but the property owners, even if they have two parcels, those parcels are going to be worth much more money on the market.
That's true.
That sixty, six hundred dollars, whatever it is a year, that's an investment in property. My wife and I walk down that road all the time, and you can't walk in the summer time, because you can't breathe, but, and that's the gas, the dust, the dust control will last for a few weeks, but we end up walking in the woods because we can't stand the dust. But like I said, we're totally in favor of it. Thank you.
Appreciate that very much.
I want to tie the nine four two, Michalinda, I also went to, and I'm also in favor of the road being paved. So, the problem is, is that it's not going to be, it's not equal for everybody, you know, like, whereas it has a half a mile, you know, I have thirty feet, we, you know, it's, it's a different price range, but I'm tired of the dust, and I'm probably not going to be there for ten years to put it on my taxes, so electrician got to be. And I agree with that, I agree with you, that road is, is very hot though, is very good. Did anybody come down automobile on their way to the union?
Yes, that's terrible.
Yeah, it's awful, and that's what Michalinda would look like if it hadn't had that layer of certain dust they put on it. I mean, I came down automobile, you know, like a little bumper car, like puddling, puddle out, and, you know, people that live on the wheel, they're going to probably use Michalinda a whole lot more, if they're close enough to the, to the rest area. So, I know it's, it's a lot of money, but it's a lot of money today, and it'll be a lot more money tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What do you say, your officer?
Richard, eighty-five twenty-five, Eastway, Lakeview. What I hear tonight is people not necessarily against it, okay, just got a few more questions, I know you're going to talk tonight, I'm going to be here any moment I need, so, I talked last fall, and I mentioned, wait till you get to the final vote, all the no votes are going to be here that night, okay? You won't hear from any of the other mates, going to be here the last night, but I don't really hear a lot of no votes at all, it's just questions of what the price is going to be, and they would like to get it done, so I hope you guys will, if you're prepared. Thank you.
Good? Any other public comments on anything?
Linda Bortman, seven twenty, Michalinda. I just wanted to say I am for paving the road also, as my husband said. When they first put down the asphalt, they said they'd come back, we talked to some people who said they'd come back and grind it down, I'd just say, there's so much traffic on the road, it got ground down for the most part without that machine, there is still some huge chunks, and I couldn't imagine if it didn't get paved. It is a good price, and everything, and I hope that you guys see that. I guess I was a little surprised, because when we got the sheet of the parcels and the amount, I thought there was only three people on that sheet, so, on that sheet that had two parcels. And now it's like more than that, so maybe you guys could let us know exactly how many people, so we get a better price, what that road's going to cost us, because if we have to share the cost with some of the people that have the two parcels, you know, I think my husband and I would be fine to do that. We're not rich, but, you know, we would be willing to do that, so, you know, something else for us to think about, ask for. Thank you.
Mr. Bortman, I'm not going to complain on the person.
Good.
My house is on, I'm going to go.
Anything on anything? Nothing, any final or comments on anything? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to, first.
I got one more thing I'd like to say before, unfortunately. Just a little speech here. I know a lot of you had doubts about me being appointed to the position as treasurer of Dalton Township, and I accept that. As a citizen of Dalton Township myself, I would have, had doubts too, it's natural. Your doubts gave me the incentive to do the best job to, to the best of my ability, and truthfully, in the beginning, coming in at such an intense time. I wanted to give up, I was also frustrated. I didn't give up, because as I said earlier, I'm a hard-farled conscious, and I care about what happens in the township. I care about the township and the people who design in it. I have grown to like my position here as treasurer, and have loved getting to know some of the wonderful people I've had the privilege of meeting. I was grateful that you entrusted me to be able to share with me your stories, the good, the laughter, the sad, the tears, being able to sit and listen, not to give advice, but just listen. I'd just like to say thank you to all of you for giving me that chance to be a part of your laughter, for giving me a chance to help you by being there to listen. You are truly the part of being the treasurer here that made it worth staying through this tax season. And today, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, I'm handing my resignation over to Lori Hayes for the Dalton Township, effective as of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, being my last day.
I make a motion to accept Kelly's resignation as of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, with regret.
Okay, motion by Lori, second by Renee. Do we have any other discussion on that? I'm very surprised, so that's, that's not my discussion, but, okay, that's a roll call vote then.
Lori, yes. Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Okay, do we have, do we have any other public comments? Make sure, make sure we're catching everyone, yes, come on up, we don't want to miss anybody.
Next to Jeffrey.
I had a whole book of jokes I was going to read off, but, anyhow, I've been in, I've been in a number of different townships, township meetings, and for the most part, I've not been pleased. But I have to say that I've gone through the planning commission meetings, and their follow-up meetings, and now I get to see the board, and what was really enjoyable to me was to actually hear the discussions, and realizing that their intelligence level was higher than what I expected. And their debates back and forth were very, very good, open and refreshing.
And your name?
Eric Woodmark.
Eric.
Yep, yep. And I want to thank you all for your, your help, and Stephen out there, sitting all woken while he, I appreciate it, I appreciate your time, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. We could talk about the widespread state of our government structure before the meeting. Perfect. All right, any other public comments?
I just want to say this to the people at, my neighbors, I never real, it's difficult to know everybody, because we're separated by trees, you know, many trees.
That's why we're there.
And that's why, that's why we're there, that's why I bought two parcels. I did realize we were such a community on our road, and I just appreciate it, I, you know, we were one of the first ones, we were the homesteaders almost, I just appreciate the community, and whether you're agreed or disagreed with, with what I had to say, that's, that's, that's just our opinions, doesn't make us, doesn't make us not neighbors. Right, Mr. Fidros? I knew your sister, I coached her.
In a world where we have so much division that's increasing and distraction, that's very true, that such an odd and controversial process could potentially bring some people together, very ironic in a good way. So.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.